Thomas Bush.
Bob Goslin.
Jonathan Barnett.
Okay, we're all here. We have no alternate, but we'll be dealing with that later in the meeting. So we call it to order. We have, um... Oh, that's the first thing on the agenda. How about that? That's easy. Alright, so, um, planning board alternate member. The one we had was Richard Kenny, who served for a number of years. He is... Oops. My mic was off. She'll yell at me. Um, he, uh, Richard Kenny has resigned. He's traveling more and all, so he can't do it anymore. The alternate member is to serve for special permits only. And we, the reason we have that alternate is because if there's someone missing on this board, um, a special permit requires four out of five votes or four out of four. So, um, an alternate member would be called in the event that there was gonna be special permits, and then we would ask them to attend. Otherwise, they don't have to attend. Sometimes they do anyway, just to learn about what's going on. Um, and we have, right now, we have, uh, one person that has volunteered, David Gleason. Um, we're opening it up. Um, Val, it's okay to open it up even though the selectmen, have they done that yet?
This is it, yeah. We-
We do it?
We make a recommendation to them.
Isn't it a joint, um, it's a joint, um-
It would need to be a joint meeting, um, if it were replacing an elected official, like when Alexander, um-
Okay, but it's not a joint for, for an alternate?
Correct. It's just a regular appointment.
Um, Val's there. She's wicked smart, so...
That's what they tell me.
So anyway, um, we're looking for, we wanted to open it up. Instead of just taking the first person that came along, we want to open it up publicly and say, if you're interested in being an alternate on the planning board for special permits only, which might be only one out of every four meetings. However, sometimes a special permit will run several weeks in a row. If you're interested, please contact the Kingston Planning Board, and, um, um, we'll go from there. And thank you, Ron Gleason, for putting your name in.
Oh, so we're not gonna just appoint-
No, we're not gonna do that. We're gonna open it up, 'cause that's the way we're supposed to do it. Okay, so, we have an alternate, which I'm really happy about.
Yeah, it's good.
And I have a pen that's already dead. And our second thing on our agenda is a lot release for Greystone Village. Uh, they're seeking lot releases for additional lots currently held. Val?
Um, Mike Fronz here from Briarwood Construction, and, um, you're, the map in front of you shows you in yellow the lots that haven't been released yet. And, um, I'm not sure we've had a chance to discuss which ones, um, and we're looking for that lip application. So, um, maybe turn it over to Mike?
Yeah, you gotta go there, 'cause people are watching at home. We have a huge, uh, audience at home.
All two viewers.
We top the charts. We top the charts in the Ki- in Kingston for our viewers. There is a mic, yeah.
We're the number one planning board meeting of all the planning board meetings.
Alright, well, yeah, hold up the mic.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, good evening. Um, I-
Give us your name and-
Oh, Mike Feroni, Briarwood Construction.
Thank you.
I, um, I've wanted to ask the board's approval for releasing a few more lots, um, prior to coming up with some sort of, um, tri-party agreement, letter of credit or cash, however you, you do it here. The, the, the reason being is, right now, the town is holding, there's twenty-four lots in total. The town is holding thirteen, and it, I just got an appraisal, well, the bank just required an appraisal done for the, uh, project. And the appraisal I, I did send to, um, to Val for everybody's review. And, and I'm not asking you to go off of their, their, their valuation. I'm just, I'm just giving you an idea of what they came up with. The appraisal done for Rockland Trust, they put a value of two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand per lot, which, with, um, thirteen lots being left, um, comes to about two-point-seven million. The, the, the bond looking, the, the bond the town is looking for is in the amount of three-hundred-and-thirt- three-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifteen to finish the road from where it is now. Um-
Is the mic, uh-
I'm sorry?
Closer to, closer to the mic.
Oh, closer to the mic, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So, so the, 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 um, the town and came up with a number of three-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand they would be looking for to, to, to hold, to finish the road. So, I, I would, I, I'm just requesting that we release a, you know, if we could release a few more lots before we came up with the tri-party agreement or the letter of credit or however you would like me to do it.
How many?
Okay, the, well, as, as requested and as I, I've already started the, we, I've, um, I've started the, um, affordable homes. There's two affordable homes in this project. I've started the process on that. The, um, the, I'm not sure why the lip hasn't been turned into, to her yet, but I, I'll be on that, uh, this week. I hired, uh, SEV, David Cashman, to do it. He's done, um, a couple others in this town. So, I'm just waiting for him to get his paperwork done. Everything that I needed to do for him is done. I'm gonna do the two homes right away. Um, as soon as we, the, as soon as we get the approval from David to start, I'm gonna start them. Um, both of them. We'll do both of them right away. Get them done. And, so those, those lots will, are gonna be on lots one and nine. So I'd like to get lots one and nine released. And I, and I'd all, I also have under construction slots five, eighteen, sixteen, and fifteen. So, I'll be looking for six tonight out of the thirteen.
So that's one, nine, five-
Eighteen, sixteen, and fifteen.
And fifteen, and then we'd still be holding seven lots.
Sixteen, what is it? Sixteen?
And fifteen.
So it would be the, the two affordable lots and four lots that I have under construction. And the, and the, we're gonna, we're gonna do one more, one, one more market rate home, and I'll request that lot at a later time, but that's what I, that's what I would, would like now, um, if possible. And we'll, we'll set a schedule, a date for another release, or I'll post the bond, whatever we need to do.
Alright, so what are you waiting for on the, on the affordables?
I, I, I'm waiting for David Cashman from SEV to get the, the, uh, the lip is, is-
Yeah, we need the, we, the town needs the applications, so we know it's been submitted to the state so that the affordable units and the lottery and all that are, are done through the local initiative program, so that they count in our inventory.
Even before they're built?
Well, he's about to-
Now is my question. Do you usually build them and then-
Then you submit.
But he's ready to go, and, and he, the next one he sells has to be the affordable one, so I'm kind of in a, in a place where I'd like to have that done, because that has to be what happens next.
So the next ones to be sold have to be the affordables?
I think we're at that point, where you gotta, it, we're in that range, where the next, out of the next one or two houses that gets sold, 'cause we have about half of them released.
Yes, well, we, yes.
So, I mean, I would say, get building them.
Absolutely. I, I'm, it's in David Cashman's hands. I'm waiting for him to say, go. I submitted the plans for what we're gonna do.
I mean, I'm just looking out for you. In other words, if those are the ones, if you have to hold other houses until those are sold?
I'm gonna hold the, all the rest of them. It, you know, I, I have-
I would just build them.
Yeah, you can build them without the lot release.
Right.
Yeah.
But we can release the lots. I don't have a problem releasing the affordable lots.
Well, you said you were waiting on the, the lip agreement.
Can we do it conditional on getting the lip agreement, so we know that it's moving along?
I don't think we need it. I don't think we need it.
Okay. I mean, it's up to you. I, I just, I just wanna make sure we keep getting, um, you know, we don't want somebody to show up at the end and say, oh, I forgot, 'cause we've had that situation.
Well, let's put it this way. Until we have that agreement and then we have the, um, bond in place, after tonight, no more lots, until those things are complete.
Absolutely.
Everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
One hundred percent.
But we release these tonight without any-
Yeah.
Yep, that's fine.
Conditions, without any-
I think, I think if possible, um, Val, maybe we could do a conference call with, um, would you mind doing a conference call with David Cashman, just so he could update you as to where I am? I mean, we may be further along than I think. I haven't been handling this part. Um, my father handles, you know, this, this, this side of it.
I'm always open to that, and I've worked with David before, so I, you know.
I'm sorry?
I'm, I'm open to that, and I've worked with David before, so that's fine.
Yeah, I think that would help get everybody on the same page, because, you know, I apologize, I'm not up to date a hundred percent of where they are. All I, I gave, I, I have turned in everything David has asked for, and I'm just waiting for him. I, I believe he's waiting for the approval from the state on the homes, I, I think, but don't, don't quote me.
Alright, well, maybe that'll put Val in the know, so she can keep us updated as well.
Yes.
And we'll know what's going on. That'd be good.
Yeah.
If we can do that. Val said she's willing to do that.
Yep.
So I don't, does anybody have a problem with releasing these lots? Five, was it five or six?
This is six, right?
Six lots. One, nine, five.
With the idea that no more will be released until these things are accomplished?
Absolutely. Well, it, it's six lots, two of, two of the six being the affordable lots.
Okay, so, just so you know what that means. We've had problems with people building houses, and all of a sudden they have a buyer, and now all of a sudden they need a lot release. This has gone on many, many times. Situation might be a little different than this, but don't promise anything, anything, anybody, anything, other than the lots where they're re- releasing tonight, because no more lots will be released until those things are accomplished.
Loud and clear.
Okay.
What are we gonna have, seven?
Tonight it's si- it's six.
You'll, yeah, you'll hold seven.
You'll be holding seven?
You'd be holding seven.
And the bond right now is three-something?
Yep.
Yeah.
That's fair.
Yeah.
I'd wait, I'd rather be way ahead of it than behind.
But we don't have a formal lot release yet, right?
Well, we were, we've negotiated it, and I'll do the same thing, where we ask you to come in and sign.
Yeah, we just need to name the lots.
Or I can go downstairs and print one up right now.
I don't, there's no problem. We can release the, we can make a motion for the number, the lot numbers, and then we can do that.
Yep.
Um, like we did before. Val would've done that, in fairness, she would've done that, or in Aaron, ahead of time, they just didn't count the lots yet.
We didn't know which lots.
The applicant usually does it.
I know.
No, I-
That would've been all done, I guess, but they, they didn't have the lots. You're right. So now, we have the lots. Does anybody need those lots read to them again to make a motion?
The lot numbers.
Lot numbers again?
One, nine, five, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen.
One, nine, five-
Fifteen, sixteen, and eighteen.
Fifteen and eighteen, okay. We need a motion?
Yes, we do.
Alright, I'll make a motion to release the following lots in Greystone Village. Uh, lots one, five, nine, fifteen, sixteen, and eighteen. Is that correct? And do we know for the lots will be released until, when all the paperwork's done on the affordables?
The receipt of the- Affordables, and we have a bond in place.
The bond in place, okay. Is that it?
And the lip agreement, right?
Lip agreement.
Okay.
We got that motion, Aaron?
Yes, sir.
Second. You want us to say it again?
No, I got it.
Okay, honey. Uh, alright, it's been, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seconded by Bob, right?
Who seconded?
Well, we both did.
Yeah.
Pick one. You have it?
Bob, Bob was quicker than John. And, um, any further discussion? Here or none? All those in favor say aye.
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 Post, abstentions? Five, zero. Thank you.
I, I'd just like to add, it's, it's, it's a pleasure working with Valerie. I work in a lot of different towns, and, uh, she is one of the best, so we, we, we-
I wish we could say that. No, no, we like it too.
Thank you.
We appreciate her.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We do too. Alright, Val. Go, Val. Alright, uh, next appointment is a public hearing at seven oh three, Seventy Summer Street. Was a proposal for apartments, and that is a pu- was gonna be a public hearing, which we can open the public hearing and clo- and then, um-
Continue.
They've requested a formal continuance to July twenty-second at seven oh one P M.
Alright, so, we're, we're looking for a continuance of a public hearing for Seventy Summer Street.
So we need a motion to open the public hearing?
Yep.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for Seventy Summer Street?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Post, abstentions, is it all in favor? Uh, motion to continue.
First, we want, do you wanna wave the note, or read the notice in, of the public hearing?
Or do you wanna read it during the continuance? Read the notice of the public hearing?
And we us- I usually do it on the continuance, but I think maybe we should just read it. Let's just read it, so people are aware ahead of time, in case they don't know about it, and they happen to live in the area. It's a better way to do it than the way I've been doing it.
Uh, notice of public hearing. The Kingston Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven oh three P M. At the Kingston Townhouse, twenty-six Evergreen Street, Kingston, Massachusetts, in room two hundred, on the petition of Mima Aurelia LLC, um, C O, care of Ezekiel Sandoval Aragun for approval of a special permit per the Town of Kingston zoning bylaw, section five, table of uses, in order to construct a six-unit residential use on the second and third floor over a first-floor business use on land owned by the applicant at Seventy Summer Street, Kingston, Plymouth County, Massachusetts, as shown on the designated Kingston assessor's map, thirty-six Lot Ten, in the Town Center District. A copy of the application and plans are available for inspection at the Town Clerk's Office, twenty-six Evergreen Street, Kingston. The petitioner, or his or her representative, and any person interested or wishing to comment on the proposal should appear at the time and place designated.
Thank you, Alex. Um, that is the hearing that was scheduled for tonight. Um, we are now about to continue it.
Do we have a date to continue to?
The twenty, was it July twenty-second?
July twenty-second?
Seven oh three?
Yep, sounds good.
We'll make a motion to continue to July twenty-second at seven oh three?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Here or none? All those in favor say aye.
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 Post, abstentions? It's five, zero, zero. Thank you, David. Alright, moving right along. Uh, one twenty-six, Ring Road. Representative for developer of solar array to present a plan to request modification of existing fence. Anybody here for that? So why don't you go up, speak into the mic, so that everybody can hear you, and give us your name and, uh, who you are, who you represent.
Hey, good evening. Uh, David Molten with, uh, Distributed Energy Infrastructure. Uh, here, I, I have some plans. I can pass them out, but here, uh, we'd like to propose a modification of the, uh, approved plans. We're about eighty, eighty-five percent done with construction. Uh, the Kingston side on one twenty-six Ring Road has a, a fence line. There's, there's three things. The fence line is like twenty feet off of the access road, which doesn't give you a lot of space to actually drive in. There's a fifty-foot stone apron. I would propose that the, the gate gets pushed back to the fifty-foot mark. It'll help, uh, traffic coming in there when they do the farming, instead of having someone stuck out in the road potentially. Uh, and additionally, the, the second piece of that is, the fence actually ties into nothing. It doesn't tie into a building. It doesn't tie into a road. The Kingston side goes to the Plymouth line and just stops. Uh, I, I see a much better option of just running the gate directly across vegetation to vegetation that we put in, and blocking it there, instead of continuing several hundred feet that ties into nothing. Uh, the third piece of that is, it also is installed, or it's shown right underneath the medium voltage line, which is just, I'm an electrician by trade, it's, it's gonna cause, we'll have to do a lot of grounding for that fence for really no real effective reason, so-
Do you have something to show us?
I do.
Pass those out would be great. Val, you've seen this?
No, I haven't.
Just the one on the left going down, right?
Exactly, yep. The way it's shown now, it actually comes all the way down to the Plymouth line.
Plymouth line?
Uh, Plymouth, sorry. Plymouth line, and then it goes into the edge over here. So we would just propose that- Second page, push the, just the gate back to the fifty-foot mark, which is, it got showed on the, on the third page. It's the, uh, gravel apron. We'll put it right at the gravel apron. That would definitely allow farm traffic and stuff to get into the, to not, to not block access with the roller gate there, of one, one certain concern. Uh, and then take it, uh, straight vegetation to vegetation, which, which is kinda showing on the, on the picture, where it cuts just directly across. I mean, one fifty-foot chunk, fifty-foot back with the roller gate, with the seven-foot, uh, vinyl, uh, channeling mesh, mesh fence like it's showing. And, uh, we're just really willing to put in, uh-
Can you go to the, can you, excuse me, can you go to the mic?
Yeah, throw up a stump to Val, too. You have that, Val?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we propose to put it fifty-foot back at the end of the stone apron to allow, uh, better traffic flow into the, into the site. Is, is one, like I said, that's one of the reasons. And then the second one is, if you see on the, on the second page, it really doesn't, it doesn't, the fence doesn't tie into anything. It just, it just fizzles out. So we propose to go vegetation to vegetation to block access.
So you wanna move it back to the, where your cars parked?
Uh-
On the picture?
Third page.
To that blue line?
Move to the third page of this.
Yeah, it, right where the car's parked is, right at the fifty-foot mark where the apron is, is, uh, is, ends. We can keep it at, we can do the same thing and put it all at twenty-foot and keep it straight, edge to edge, too. I just, it seems like it's better for, for traffic to get into the site.
I think it makes no difference at all where it is, as far as that goes.
It's interesting stuff.
Yeah.
Val?
I agree. I think it makes it easier for someone to pull in and unlock the gate.
Especially if it's closed and the need to unlock it or whatever.
Exactly, yeah. So it, it's, it seems like common sense.
Yeah. Common sense?
Mm-hmm.
Do they need our approval or lose?
Yes, it's a modification of the site plan.
Then I'll make a motion to, to approve the modifications of the site plan, as submitted.
Second.
Been moved and seconded.
Discussion.
To approve the, um, location of the gate, as presented. Any discussion? Here or none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, abstentions? It's five, zero, zero. One and a agreeable bunch of people.
So we've agreed to the offer being fifty rather than twenty.
Yep.
That they could go vegetation to vegetation.
Okay.
And that it be pushed back.
Okay, and I don't have to worry about the rest of that fence line that doesn't tie into anything. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Discussion, Indian Pond Estates, parking for pool across from Country Club. Site plan from two thousand and five.
So we've received a letter from some residents at the Indian Pond Country Club, which you have in your packet. And it's expressly to the Z B A, but copied to the planning office. So, um, being that in two thousand and five, you reviewed the pool with a, um, parking lot that's rather small, but right immediately across the street from the Country Club, and it's large parking lot. You agreed at the time that there was adequate parking because of the large Country Club parking lot, and there's about ten spots at the pool itself. And it's been operating without any issues for roughly nineteen years. And apparently, there was an event that, that we have pictures of in, in the, in the, uh, complaint that relate to some parking on the grass, and, um, these are private roads, and it's a private Country Club. Um, we wanted to just make you aware that we received the complaint and, um, allow you to have some discussion on it. The other part of the complaint talks about a sinkhole on Country Club Way. It's not a sinkhole. It's actually, um, a place where whoever did the original binder missed putting a frame and grate over one of the catch basin areas that has the walk downs for cleanouts. And that, we think the manhole cover for that rotted out, and that caused the pavement immediately over it to collapse, and that's what makes that large hole. Um, it appeared, and within twenty-four hours, there was a sheet metal placed over it, until they can get the right casting materials to properly cover that. Um, so, we don't know, uh, because it's a private road and because it's not finished, what other concerns there might be, but we all have concerns about the condition of the road. But that's a separate issue from the pool and the parking lot itself. And as you know, and, and as I'll just restate for the record, the planning board has taken the developer to court. The developer has been found and ordered that, um, they are responsible and obligated to finish the roads, and they have appealed that decision. So, uh, that's the end of my, kind of summary for you there, Mr. Chairman.
Right, so I think originally, um, the board, zoning board of appeals approved this plan. I mean, approved the use of this pool, and we approved the site plan, correct?
Yes.
So, in my opinion, we approved, uh, the pool with the parking it had, and the overflow parking lot's supposed to be across the street in the parking lot. So, we can hold onto that by asking the zoning enforcement officer, um, to, um, enforce that parking requirement, where if it's, if the ten spots are full, they park in the parking lot across the street. And maybe we should forward a letter to Jason Silver, asking him to enforce that and to, uh, encourage them to park where they belong.
In marked parking spaces?
Marked parking spaces, which, who knows if there's any of those in the parking lot. But maybe into paved parking, 'cause I don't think there's anything marked in the parking lot, is there?
Uh, cor- yeah, you're right, marked.
I know that there is. Have a paved parking lot across, uh, paved parking lot for, um, Indian Pond Country Club.
Okay, we'll drop that letter for you, Mr. Chairman.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
I think this is a, I mean, I agree with you, yes, but I, I think this is more of a policing issue than it is a planning board.
Yeah, except for the police can't do anything about it. This is private roads.
No, I don't mean the police police. I mean, they should have rules and regulations at the pool, that this is where you park, and this is where you-
They should police themselves.
And if somebody's having a function there, whoever's having the function should be on top of this.
But wasn't, uh, uh, am I reading this wrong? I thought it was, there was a function at the club, and they parked at the pool. And the pool people are complaining. Is that, am I reading this wrong?
Well, I, I thought there was, there was a function at the pool, and they overpark, they parked everywhere.
That's the way I read it.
Yeah, they didn't park on the paved parking spaces. They parked on the grass, right?
The club, the club had a function that not only used all the parking, uh, the club's main and, and pool parking lots, but also filled every spot at four thirty-one.
So whether it's the pool or the Country Club, it's still the- So whether it's the pool or the Country Club, it's still the same issue.
Yeah.
Okay. What's four thirty-one?
That's the address of the pool.
That's the address, okay. So they mentioned that the club's main and pool parking lots and also every spot at four thirty-one.
Well, that's probably the, um, the other Country Club building that is Fred Junior's that's next to the pool and not Fred Senior's.
Okay, just trying to figure out what's going on here.
Well, so each, each, each one, each one is a member, correct?
So, in a nutshell, you have the Country Club that Fred Senior built.
Yep.
And that has a big parking lot on either side. Then you have on opposite side of the street, still Country Club Way. You have a pool on the corner, and then you have Fred Junior's little Country Club, um, mini, next to that pool. And that's a sort of a common area parking lot. So I guess they're saying that an event happened and people parked on the grass.
And this is the first time in all these years?
Probably not.
Probably not. This is the first time we've received a written.
He didn't have enough parking to begin with.
Isn't there, wouldn't there, wouldn't it make sense to just have these people put up, you, you're gonna be towed if?
But we can't, nobody can do that because it's private.
They'd have to do it themselves.
Can't they do it?
Oh, they can do it, but they won't do it.
They, they can have their own regulations.
They haven't even built roads.
Yeah.
The roads have holes in them.
So this complaint is coming from the residents?
Some residents there about Mr. Tonsberg and the development.
Yep.
This, I like the idea of recommending or sent, asking them to send a letter.
Right, you know, and will it do anything? Probably not, because we want in court for the roads to be finished, and they're not finished. So will it do anything? We're dealing with a person that does not follow through, has not done anything correctly, um, has aggravated not only every board in this town, but every person that lives in this neighborhood that he built. Doesn't care about the neighbors, doesn't care about the roads, doesn't care about anything. So, I understand the neighbors are frustrated. Letting you know, if you're watching this and you're a neighbor, we're frustrated, too. We have him in court. We beat him in court, and we're waiting for the, he has appealed it, and we're waiting for that to come through. That's all I know. I don't know anymore. I don't go to court. I just get word back. We, we want things to be finished there for the neighbors. We want things to be right. We want those roads to be accepted eventually when they're correct, correctly built, so that we can monitor and help out the neighborhood and do all those things, but our hands are tied. And so frustration is throughout the town. It's in the hands of one person to make a good decision for the first time in a while. That's my opinion.
Val, those pictures behind the hole, are those inside that hole?
The pictures that are showing you from above are showing you what's inside the, under the road.
And through that hole?
Through that hole, which has been covered with a steel plate and/or repaired by now.
I think it was a temporary plate that they put across, and they didn't even put the real, you know, plate, and it rotted out. And it's just a big hole that goes into, way down into the ground. Some kid went in there, or even somebody in a car would've, would've been a real problem.
Yep. That's from the original pavement.
And of course, it, it happened to be in Fred, uh, right in front of Fred Junior's house. So.
Okay. All right, so we'll write, we'll draft that letter.
So it's the people who own four thirty-one that are complaining, whatever that is. Yep, that's who the lawyers represent, four thirty-one. They can say this is, that everyday occurs, they say, pretty much.
It is adjacent to the commercial building, I think it's four thirty-one. So anyway. Do we, we didn't make a motion to surrender last. Do we need to do that, Val?
No, I, we'll write the letter for you and, and you can sign it.
Is it okay if she writes the letter and I sign it?
Absolutely.
Is that okay? Alex and David?
Yep.
I don't understand.
Okay. Yes, Val, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, grant proposal. This will be, um, Val again.
So, we're passing along the lot release. Aaron was able to sneak down and type it up while we did the last two items of business. So that's just being forwarded, so you don't have to come in. Um, on the grant proposal, uh, we have, um, we were originally gonna apply for one program, and it turns out we're gonna apply for a different one. So we're, we're applying for a planning assistance grant from the energy, Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, or what's also known as E E A, um, from the Commonwealth. And what we've done is we had gone to the Affordable Housing Trust, and I see Jean Landis-Nahman is here, and I appreciate her support. They voted to provide a, um, up to ten percent match, which was the original proposal requirement was ten percent match. We're now up to a twenty-five percent match requirement. So what I'm proposing to do is match, have the planning board's account that has, um, some of the negotiated funds from previous permits that are for the best, um, you know, for the benefit of the town as a whole. And, uh, we have roughly a little over two hundred thousand left in there. Part of that I intend to use for advancing the Tarkland interest, intersection into the tip. But a small, very small portion of that, roughly eight thousand dollars, I'm proposing that would go towards the match. And then the other five percent would come from my time. And then we would apply for this grant from the housing, to do an update to the housing production plan, which is, um, needs to be recertified by February of twenty-six, which means we would need to do the work over the next year. Old Colony Planning Council, our regional planning agency, has agreed to be the consultant, and they've reviewed the proposed scope and budget that I prepared, and they're fine with it. They've written a letter of support. We have the vote of the grant match and letter of support from the housing trust. Uh, the selectmen voted, um, last week to provide a letter of support, and I'm seeking a letter of support and a vote to support using those public benefit accounts for, towards the match as, as, uh, so that I am fully eligible to apply for the grant. And I need both of those things, a letter of support.
Do you have the amount or no?
Eight thousand dollars.
And that's, that's, that's the actual amount?
That's the amount of the match.
Okay. So if anybody agrees with that, we will actually, um, make it one motion to do a letter of support, and we can release them. Well, we'll do, two separate. We'll do a letter of support if everybody agrees with that.
So moved.
And, uh, is it okay, uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Is it okay, uh, with everybody that Val would do that letter and I, and I would sign it along with her? Everybody have a problem with that, David? No, okay. Um, on the motion, all those in favor, let's say aye.
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 Okay, um, there's.
Signature.
Be a five zero zero. Uh, and then we need a motion to, um, allow Valerie to use eight thousand dollars out of the negotiated, uh, public benefit fund um, as a matching, um, matching monies.
So moved.
Moved by Jonathan. Second?
Second.
Second by Alex. Everybody understand what's that for? Okay, everybody is good? Any questions for the discussion? Here are none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, extensions, it's five zero zero.
And I, I just have one quick update that we've asked a consultant, Pat Brennan, who's done some, um, reviews for this board to update the subdivision plates. They're, um, in the rules and regulations. They've been photocopied to the point where part of them isn't even in the rules and regulations anymore. And in his review, he's found some discrepancies between the written text and the drawings anyway. So when I say plates, I'm talking about cross-sections of the roads, the actual physical drawing details that we require. So I will be coming to you at a future date, um, and I'm using my engineering account, um, monies and what's left over in my planning budget this year to cover that cost. Um, but I wanted to let you know that we're doing that project, just to bring the regulations up to date.
Thank you. Okay, the next thing we, uh, on our agenda would be minutes. We have a joint, uh, meeting minutes of, uh, June tenth, two thousand twenty-four. And everybody was present. All five members. I stopped by the town hall today and read through it. I found no problems.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of June tenth, two thousand twenty-four.
For second.
Moved in second to accept the minutes of, what was it? June what?
Tenth.
June tenth, two thousand twenty-four, as presented. Any further discussion? Moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, extensions, it's five zero zero.
And, Mr. Chairman, did you wanna invite our surprise guests to say a few words? If you're, if you're interested?
You guys wanna come up and? Didn't expect you to be here, but you're here. Glad to meet you. Tell us who you, tell everybody who you are.
Pleasure to be with you all. My name is Howard Levine, co-founder and managing partner of Second Horizon Capital, along with.
Yeah, I'm Camilo Vela, the older founder and managing partner of Second Horizon as well.
We're the owners of Kingston Collection, formerly known as Independence Mall. Pleased to have the opportunity to be here with you in person. We knew we had the chance to be with you virtually a couple of weeks ago, but did wanna spend some time with all of you in person and, and say that we're really encouraged about the steps that are being taken toward the longer-term visioning of the property. We know there's a long road ahead, but we're looking forward to working with this committee and other constituencies of the town to progress this forward. Certainly welcome feedback as we work through that process and look forward to starting on a, a period of community engagement here.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll give you my two cents. Um, we're glad you're in town. You sound, uh, energetic, and, uh, you sound confident. Uh, Val has, has said good things. Um, that's always been a huge tax base for the town of Kingston. We'd like to make it bigger. More taxes. Um, so do a really good job and we'll get more taxes out of it. And, uh, but we will, we will, I, I know that the board will support everything at the same time as, as protecting the town from anything that doesn't fit.
Understood.
We, we expect this to be, uh, back and forth and, you know, collaborative, collaborative in effort, so fighting pretty easy with Val and her team. So we hope we can increase the, the, the size of that collaboration.
I've one really appreciate, uh, the willingness to have an open dialogue on various updates, and, and I think that's demonstrated once again from you coming down here today, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, the vision of, of our Zoom meeting that we had, that Val was, was showing us and you guys showed us was pretty special. Um, I'm for one, I'm very excited to the direction that hopefully that's gonna go.
Yes, we had that discussion after the meeting, yeah, and John was very encouraged. I, I was, too. I think we could, there's gonna be something really special up there that could really, uh, bring business to the town, make it sort of a designation spot, and, um, it hasn't been that in a long time, and I would like to see that. And we have the highway to support it. We have, uh, road improvements coming. We hope in the near future there. Um, so it'll, it'll be great. Anybody else?
Oh, you guys have wrapped it up pretty good.
I'll just say that, uh, you know, we had a good meeting today, Jason and, and Paige, which is the, uh, Paige, thank the architects that are working on this project, and myself, um, probably for a solid half hour to forty-five minutes talking about the zoning. Um, we're gonna have that wrapped up this week and off to the state on time, um, next week for their review, their ninety days of review. Um, and we'll get it off the town council at the same time, but, uh, you know, it's been a really good opportunity to talk about, um, how we take all the steps into the master planning process and, and.
Is that what you're doing when I came in today?
Yes.
I thought so. Okay, great. Anything else? Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the time. Looking forward to partnership.
Don't ask for a tax break till the next game.
You can go somewhere else for that. All right, uh, anybody else, uh, anything else, Val? We all sat? All right, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, second by Alex. He's faster than John.
You got me.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's a five zero. I declare it.
Thank you.